So if we can please call the roll then.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Albritton.
Present.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Here.
Councilmember Kozinski.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Excellent, thank you. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve Bader, will this be it?
No.
All right. Okay, item number three is the capital improvement.
This is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, LPA, recommending that the town council adopt a five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years 2023 through 2027 and providing for an effective date.
Awesome. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item from the council? Seeing none, is there any discussion on the item from the public?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. I'd like to thank our new penny pincher to, because this is something that it took Marty a long time to get right, and he got it right the first time. So, thank you, Emile. And I look forward to next year being, doing the exact same thing, this five-year plan, which we have to do every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, if we can please call the roll on the item.
Councilmember Hartman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton.
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. And then we have the approval of the minutes from August 25th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections from the council? Seeing none, any additions, corrections from the public? Seeing none, if we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton.
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
And we are adjourned. All right. So then we will transition into our normal meeting. You're probably wondering, how many meetings are we having tonight? Well, this is our third and final meeting, so. All right, if we can please call the roll.
Certainly, Mayor. Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Albritton.
Present.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Here.
Councilmember Kozinski.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Very good, thank you. Our first item is our Arbor Day proclamation.
Okay, this is a proclamation for Arbor Day 2022. Whereas in 19, I'm sorry, 1872, Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas in accordance with the policies and goals of the Town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan adopted May 8, 2003, the town set forth measurable objectives for the protection and enhancement of critical ecological systems integrated to South Florida and the town's natural environment, including the maintenance and improvement of air quality by increasing tree coverage in the town and by meeting the standards to become recognized by the National Arbor Day Foundation as a Tree City USA. And whereas on December 20, 2007, Southwest Ranches was recognized as a Tree City USA. And whereas continuing to meet the standards for designation as a Tree City USA provides direction for management of the town's tree resources, encourages public education about tree care, and promotes a sense of pride in the community. And whereas Southwest Ranches has continued to meet all standards and requirements for continuing designation as Tree City USA and will be recognized in 2022 for its 16th consecutive year. And whereas annual proclamation of Arbor Day in Southwest Ranches is a requirement for continuing recognition as Tree City USA. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of top soil, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Now therefore, it be proclaimed by the town council of the Town of Southwest Ranches that annually, the third Friday in January shall be recognized as Arbor Day in the Town of Southwest Ranches. Further, the council urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, to support efforts to protect our tree resources, and to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Dated this 8th day of December 2022 and signed by our mayor, Steve Bright Cruz.
Great. Thank you, Russell. Very good. Do we, do we need a vote on that, or are we good? We're good. Yep, okay. All right, so let me open it up to public comment.
Sure, Mayor. We have one public comment tonight. Reserve at Ranches residents.
Hey, how you guys doing?
Doing good.
Ben Boulay, Ozzy Delgado.
Pleased to meet you.
So we were representing eight residents at the Reserve at the Ranches on a matter just involving the front security gate. We have communities about four to five years old, and we have, you know, we have residents and families, and, you know, some athletes. And we've just been having a series of issues. As of last week, there was a string of car break-ins where they went to several homes, jumped the fences, went inside. We've had home invasions, we've had mailbox issues. Most importantly, you know, we all have young children, and it's mostly a matter of safety. At this point, all eight residents, the construction's over. We're fully settled into the homes, and we're getting incoming traffic on the daily, high speeds, and we're just looking for a decision to move forward on a gate. We're here with our general contractor. Ozzy has served some experience. I'll let him speak to that in his previous employment. Go ahead.
Yep, sure. So, thank you. I was a former COO of the Cleveland Clinic, which I know served right here down the, down the road. A lot of our fellow ranchers, I'm a new rancher, just moved in last year, so it's been very welcoming. Really enjoy the farmer's market on Saturdays and get to meet a lot of folks there. I do believe in the mission and what's important. It was great to be, listen to the, the meeting before regarding fireworks and the intention of the town and keep it rural. I think our plea here is to seek safety from that perspective and nothing else for our small eight-home community. We've heard, and we really seek the leadership. In my time at the Cleveland Clinic, I know the importance of partnering with the council and working with the city and moving forward a lot of the agenda items. We've heard secondhand that this is not something that is code or appropriate, and I think coming here as a unity with all eight residents present in the audience today, really kind of seeking that, that support and approval to see what we could do, or seek guidance to be able to kind of, you know, preserve the safety of our families and our children.
That's, yeah, that's the. Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor, we have one late speaker, if you'd like to hear.
Sure.
Noel Hollingsworth.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. If the previous speakers had taken a look at our comprehensive plan, they will find they are not eligible for gates. It is in the comprehensive plan, therefore it is a mute issue as it stands right now. If they want to try and change the comprehensive plan, they can go ahead and try. We've been burned once by a gate in our town, and it's never going to happen again. Thank you.
Thanks, Noel. So, so what we'll do here, so the public comment is for the public to comment, and then later on in the meeting, the council has their section to comment. And I know I'll make some comments along this way. So I know it seems a little, little odd, like you make comments and nothing, nothing is heard back, but I will respond to, and others may or may not, so. All right. Any other public comment? That's it? Okay. Public comment is closed. Board reports. Oh, wait a minute, hold on a second. Hold on a second. Who is it that snuck in our back door here? We have, we have a very, very special person that is joining us this evening, and I just want to recognize this. When we, when we were first formed as a town, in our original council, there were five individuals, and one of those individuals is right here with us, Astronite. And he has done so much for this town that I couldn't even begin to list them all. But when, to give you an indication, we have a Parks Foundation, and it is called the Astronite Parks Foundation. And so even, even though he had to retire and, and move out of the town, his good work is still continuing in our town. There isn't a day that goes by that we're not a better town because of the gentleman that is sitting in that front row there. Aster, I don't know if you want to say a few words. If you want to say a few words, you can come up, or we'll take the mic to you. But if you don't want to say a few words, that's okay, too. Okay. December, if you can maybe just bring them, thank you, December. Hold it a little closer. Can we, December, can you just double-check, make sure it's on and it's working, because it's not, I don't think we're hearing it.
Not hearing it at all.
Try it.
There we go.
Yes.
Much better.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Mayor, mayors of the council, ladies and gentlemen, I am really happy to be here tonight. I thought I did here early, but the traffic on the road was for quite a bit, so here anyway. So, all these years that I have been connected to the town, and I still am connected, I never will until I die. The foundation has been doing very well, and on Saturday, we will have another foundation, chili cook-off and a car show. So I'm asking everybody to come to us on Saturday and help the town again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aster. Awesome. Aster, it's always, you, this town is always, you know, you're always part of our town, and you're always welcome, and it's always a thrill to see you. So thank you for making the trek on down and spending some time with us. I don't know if some other folks, we're good, or?
We'll see you Saturday.
Yeah, we'll see you Saturday. Awesome, awesome. But great to see you, Aster, and great, great to have the family here as well. So, thank you. All right. Board reports.
Hello. Good evening, town council, mayor, vice mayor, councilmen. George Morris on behalf of the Drainage Board. We didn't, we're not going to meet this month. Obviously, it's too close, the end of the year and Christmas, so we are not going to meet this month, so I'd just like to put that out there. But with respect to what's been going on since my last report in November, we have the Green Meadows Project that's going east to Dykes. That project is moving well, moving forward. It's going very well. Another thing that we've worked on as well is the notices for fill permits. So what we've changed at one of our last meetings, a couple of meetings ago, it was when somebody comes in and applies for a fill permit, it's to notice the adjacent neighbors. We're now implementing those notices and sending them out as a, you know, effort to, you know, inform the public, because we know that filling is a hot topic. And also, next year, we're going to be addressing, you know, the, the fill permit issue as well. On that note, there's not too many other things, other than, you know, I've served on the board for a long time. I look forward to serving again. I've been on, on different boards for about 14 years now. It's a, it's a pleasure serving the town. So, on that note, the Drainage Board, that's all I have to report. On the Astronite Foundation, Southwest Ranches Park Foundation, hello, Aster, great to see you. A real pleasure and an honor for all of us. Couple of things, you did steal a little bit of my thunder. With respect to the car show, it's going to be Saturday. Wonderful event. Weather looks great. It's going to be a dry day. The event starts at 9:00 AM. It's at the Rolling Oaks Park. For those of us who know where it's at, or don't know where it's at, it's Griffin, 178 Mathers Boulevard, down to the Southwest Ranches Barn. Please come out. There's going to be food, fun, lots of games and activities. It's going to be a wonderful event. It's also a chili cook-off as well, so that's incorporated into the car show as well. So it's a South Florida Chili Cook-Off and Car Show. So wonderful event. And the other event that we have coming up right after that is going to be the carnival. The carnival's going to be in January. It's going to start January the 12th in the afternoon, and it's going to go on until Monday. It's going to end on Monday. Briefly, I'll just go through the hours. It's going to be on Thursday from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Friday, 5:00 PM to 10:30 PM. Saturday, it's going to start at 1:00 PM to 10:30 PM. Sunday, 1:00 to 10:30 PM. And on Monday, from 12:00 to 6:00, it's going to be a short day. It's going to be the Martin Luther King Holiday, actually, that day. This year, we're ending it a little bit early at 10:30 versus 11:00, just to keep the crowds down and, you know, make it more of a family thing. We're also planning on trying to have some music out there, some other different events and vendors, so we're trying to, you know, expand a little bit, try to make it a little bit better, and more country. So, that's pretty much it. We also have the Tree of Life behind us. I keep mentioning, mentioning it, that we're selling different levels, egg corns and branches, et cetera. It's a wonderful thing to contribute. It's right behind our room, something permanent that's going to be in this, this room forever, so something we need to do. Pretty much on that note, that's it. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, George. Any other board reports? Seeing none, council member comments?
Yeah, I'll go first, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Gary.
Got a lot of things here to cover. First off, thank you, everybody, for coming. And those of you out in YouTube land is three, thank you for watching.
It's good to see the crowd here bigger than YouTube land. I like that. That's awesome.
What can I tell you? First item is, I just want to mention, just for general purpose knowledge, Town Hall is going to be closed Friday through Monday of Christmas weekend and New Year's weekend, celebrating Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, Monday. We'll reopen on Tuesday. Hazmat at the park, at the barn, is on January 7th coming up, and that's going to come up fast. That's only three weeks from now. So, get your stuff together, tire, old tires, cans of paint, aerosol, weed killer, whatever, electronics. Bring it over. It's seamless. They take it out of your car for you. You just have to show a proof of residency. It's a, it's a great service. It happens four times a year, and it's something to really help you clean, help you clean out your garage and what of stuff you accumulate. I took a recent photo I gave, if you guys can put that up. I just want to show, show everybody something. That is, I do twice a week, I walk Mathers Boulevard from my house, which is at the south end, to the north end, and this is what I pick up. And as you can see, about 90, this is a month of October and November. And you can see about 90% of, the vast majority of that is coming off of landscape trailers and service vehicles, chainsaw blades, locks, pins, all kinds of stuff. I couldn't believe the volume. When I, I usually just like throw it away as I get it, then I decided to keep it and hold on to it for a while. And these are all tire poppers, stuff that's, this is all, every intersection on the road on 178. And it's, it's really self-serving why I pick it up, because it's usually I'm the guy, I'm the guy's tire that finds it. I've had nine blowouts in two years.
Wow.
So, it could have been my, my employees might add something to that when I worked, but, you know, it, it happens. So anyway, I just want to point that out. You guys can take that down. But that's, that, all our roads are like that, and it's, and it's coming off of trailers. There, where people, the companies, I don't believe, are securing their, their loads. So I would like just to emphasize that. And that was, that's physical proof of it. And I picked that up. It's right on the side of, right on the side of 178. And at each intersection, tons of screws and edger blades you saw, and chainsaw blades, and, and all kinds of tools also. And the tools are usually flattened, so they can't be reused, and they're, they're not good. So I just wanted to show that. The speed trailers are in and working. They work really well, especially the one over on Sunshine Ranches on Sterling Road, right as you're coming in off of Sterling and crossing over Flamingo. I go by there a couple of times a week, and it works really, really well. So just want to mention that they're going to be moving around the county coming up. I want to talk a little bit about advisory boards. We have a, we don't have a real policy on, on advisory board meetings. They kind of meet as they get scheduled, and I really think that two to three times out of the year, every advisory board that we go to comes up with, well, should we meet next month, or should we not meet next month, or, and we really don't have a policy on that. And what I'd like to do is formulate a policy and put it up for discussion here tonight. I think that the advisory boards should take a hiatus in the month of December and the month of July. Most of them do anyway, but it's always the same question over and over every year. And if we just mandate it as a policy. Now, they can still meet if they have something going on that they want to meet, but I'm thinking just as a general purpose guidelines, that we take, that they take off December and they take off July, and it kind of takes a discretion out of, and it helps the staff plan, you know, their lives, you know, around all of that. So, and I'd like to hear your opinions on that as we go down, council member comments, or, you know, what have you on that, because we could give Andy direction on that. And, you know, and, and it, like I said, if they need to meet for a special reason, you know, the advisory board may have something going on that they have to, they have to meet. They can meet. I mean, it's not a hard, fast rule. It's just a policy, something like that. But we, but we lack that right now.
Yep.
So, that's something I'd like to bring up. Also, I'd like to bring up on the advisory boards, there's very, very, the attendance advisory boards are very sparse. It's basically just the, the town council. And if, and a lot of people, if people want to join an advisory board, I suggest that you go to the advisory boards, see how they work, become a part of it, and go, like, every month, go. Not just one time, but go every month to get a feel for what goes on at, at these meetings. And I'm going to use an example of a, a younger, younger-than-me lady who I will name, I'm not going to name her, but she went to the Parks Board for two years straight, was not on the board. Sat in, asked questions when it was appropriately. Her opinion was solicited on certain things, and she later was asked to join the board, and she did. But she put in the time, is what I'm trying to say. There was no, you know, there was no magic wand wave. She put in the effort to become a part of that board. And I think that's really, really important for people who want to join boards, is that they come and they, they make themselves known, and they get the, the gist of what the board's actions are. So I wanted to, just, I just want to point that out there, put that out there. I'm sorry. Okay, our January meeting is going to be the 26th of January, just as one meeting. The car show, we've already, already talked about that with the chili cook-off. I want to wish everybody a happy holidays. It goes without saying, you know, Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, Christmas, enchilada. There's something that just came up today that I'd like to bring up, and that's regarding the fireworks. It's been brought to my attention by, by our attorney, that we don't have a local ordinance regarding the other 362 days out of the year that fireworks are illegal. There's nothing for, there's nothing, because it's a state law, there's nothing for Davie to enforce. So what I'd like to do is, on that vein, is come, is craft some sort of a local ordinance that the Davie Police could enforce on the 362 days when it's illegal. And I would like to send it to the comp board with, you know, our input, because we all attend those meetings, and have them work on it and come up with something, whether it's, we have a section of town, like Founder's Park and the Broadwing area on, over by the cemetery way out west, where people are allowed to shoot them off with a permit, or, you know, or something like that. You know, I, there's, there's a lot of possibilities on the way this can go. And should the Davie Police issue, you know, notice to appear as a misdemeanor, you know, what, what, what are the consequences of that, of that ordinance that we can come up with, with Keith's help and, and, you know, do that. So I'd like to hear you guys' thoughts on all of that as we go forward with that. But I think we could do that, you know, before, before the July.
Yep.
You know, on something like that. And that might help lessen the, supposedly one day, the one day in July you're allowed to do it, which turns into like seven days. And to make it more enforceable, or something like that, on our, on our local level. And it's something we've never really contemplated before, because we've always just referred to the state. But now we can, we can do it on, on our local level for those days. So I'd like to put that forward on that, and you guys can chime in on that when it comes, when it comes around. Last thing I want to close with is Sunshine Ranches Homeowners' Association had a, a meeting here a while back, and it was a very interesting meeting about the 40 acres, and they came up with a, a really great plan. Have three homes on 40 acres, and I really fully, I fully support something like that. I'm very inclined to, to support that, and would love to see that come forward in the future. It looked like it fixed a lot of the problems that were coming up from the neighborhood, and it was voted unanimously by the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners' Association, and naturally, David reclused himself from it, so I just, I'm going to make mention of that. But it was, it's a really good plan. Like, I could really support the, the, the three homes on 40 acres plan, and, or if somebody came up with one better, with only two homes on, you know, or something like that, you know. So, and I'll, and I'll close with that for right now, Mayor, and.
Great.
Cross the list off.
Awesome.
Done. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Great, thanks, Gary. You'd like to go next?
I'll go.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, good evening, folks. And yeah, that was an excellent discussion earlier on the fireworks and the impacts to animals. I know what my dog does. I know what my chickens do, but I, I haven't had horses around fireworks, and it's, I've heard the horror stories, but I've never seen the pictures before. Pretty nasty stuff. Certainly something that warrants our attention. I'll get more into the fireworks in a couple of minutes. During the, the recent campaign, you know, it was made really clear by everybody I spoke to that keeping us rural, maintaining our lifestyle is why most of us came here, and it's what keeps us here, peace and quiet, you know, the ability to have livestock, large animals, et cetera. And the council's done some things over the last couple of years to preserve our lifestyle. We passed a law two years ago that basically said if you're buying a piece of property, I'll just say 10 acres, and the acreage around you is all two and a half acres, that's what you're going to have to change the zoning to. You can't convert it to one acre. So that, that was a great idea to, you know, to keep our density low. I've heard a bunch of good ideas over, like I said, over the campaign, but I'd like to put a workshop together if, if you folks would come help us out. Because the council's got ideas, but we'd really like resident input. In, next month, in the month of January, we're supposed to have one meeting. What I'm proposing is on what would normally be our first meeting, January the 12th at 7:00 PM. In lieu of the meeting, we have a workshop to look at, and we'll keep it at an hour, two hours? What do you guys think? Hour?
An hour.
Two hours, got to look. The workshop is on keeping us rural, soliciting resident input, any kind of feedback from anybody who wants to come here and say, this is my idea. Because there was a, there were some interesting things that you hear from people. You know, you talk to somebody who's got a couple of horses, it's all about the equestrian lifestyle. I don't get out there and say, it's all about my chicken lifestyle, but I know that, you know, people have different types of animals. They, they breed dogs, they've got kitty cats, all sorts of things. And it's all part of our lifestyle. So what can we do as a community? What ideas do you, do you have? What I was just going What ideas do you, do you have? What I was just going down the route of is I, I talk to people out my way. It's about the animals and all of that. When I talk to some of the people that are building these large homes over in Sunshine Ranches, keeping us rural to them is about good roads, high fences, walls. I mean, that's, that's kind of not rural, but it's their idea of what's rural. So I'd like to try to come up with some consensus and some feedback for the council that we can go to work on over the next year to continuously look at opportunities to protect what we've got. You know, the other thing that I'm sure since just about everybody here is a resident, when you say you live in Southwest Ranches, you get the constant response back, really? I've always wanted to live there. What a great place it is to live. The only way we're going to keep it this way, folks, is everybody staying engaged and keeping us rural. So that's item number one. So markdown, and I'll put this in my note that I put out in the town newsletter. And I talked to Andy and Andy's going to promote this workshop. We're looking at January, the 12th at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall. Another area that a lot of people spoke of over the campaign was public safety. Now that's police and fire. When you talk about public safety, it's not just picking one side or the other. And right now there's funds out there potentially for us to get additional policemen, police assistance. Andy and his team are working with, with the state and the county on grants that are out there. And I called, Debbie Wasserman Schultz is our connection to federal money. I called her yesterday. I hope to hear back from her, I hope today, but I generally get a phone call back from her in a day or two. There may be federal money, you know, over the pandemic, we heard about more police protection. There've been 100 discussions that have come out of Washington DC on protection, better police protection, et cetera. So I want to try to tap into that. If we can get a few more police officers on duty, you know, round the clock or even per week, it's going to lead to hopefully less speeding. We get the police reports every week on what goes on across town. It's a lot of petty crime in our town. I mean, nobody's robbing banks here. We, we don't, I heard earlier about a home invasion. I hadn't ever heard about a home invasion in our town, but that stuff does go on on a minor scale. And in my mind, a few more police officers that are on patrol can, can certainly help reduce that. So we're, we're working on potentially some additional police officers. Gary, I like the idea of the policy on advisory boards. Because since we're in that season right now, we're getting, you know, you heard it every meeting. Are we going to meet this month? Are we going to meet next month? What's the story? If, if we put it out there and then it's up to the advisory board to change it, I think that's a good idea. There's another issue that we're having in town. During the pandemic, I went to most of the code enforcement hearings. And during the pandemic, with a lot of people being at home, there were a lot of people that were doing construction work, you know, without permits. That's changed now. Maybe it's the rainy season that just ended, but we, if you go to a code enforcement hearing, the majority of the discussions right now are on illegal filling. You can't just fill your yard. And even if it's a truckload, you can't just fill your yard. And there's really good reasons for it. I know we all have, I'm at the point now where I'm going to have to hire somebody to come in with probably 10 or 15 truckloads of muck and sand and everything because everything's kind of settling down around my yard right now. So I'm at that 30-year maintenance point where I'm going to have to spend a chunk of change. But a lot of people will just go out and they'll call Bushel Stop and have them drop off two loads this weekend, two loads next weekend. Here's what the problem is with, with illegally filling your property. How many people in the room are professional engineers? I'm not. Ah, one. And I know Rod's back there. So we have two in the room. So those two guys could probably give you pretty good advice on how to fill your property. So you don't impact your neighbors, fill your property so you don't flood the road, et cetera. There's a million reasons that we need to look at the filling that people are looking to do. With my own, I want to put a fence across the front of my property. What do I need to do? I need their approval. I want to put a fence across the back. Like I said, I've got some areas in my yard that the muck is just, it's gone. So, you know, when you walk up to the edge of my, my driveway, which is four inches thick, there's a four inch drop because the muck has disappeared over the years. So I don't know, Andy, I would, I know a lot of people say they don't know about our fill ordinance. I know a lot of people, we, we have a lot of turnover in our community with people coming and going. I don't know if there's a way that we can get a letter out to our residents when they, when, when new people move in, informing them that we have a fill ordinance and you can't just fill it your leisure? You know, there's been a lot of discussion on this and one of the reasons I wanted to bring it up tonight, and I'll bring it up more when it comes up, but we have a drainage and infrastructure advisory board. And they are going to go to work on the fill ordinance so that we can kind of normalize this a little better. Maybe possibly make the process a little easier if it's possible. I got a note from a guy last week saying that he was declined on a, on a wetlands determination. And, you know, how can this be? I think with, based on what I read, the guy, you know, put a permit into the county for a wetlands determination, for a fill permit, the county told him, yeah, it's wetlands. That doesn't stop you. I mean, I'm on three acres. It was all wetlands when I bought it. It's still mostly wetlands. So there's a way to work with the county on wetlands determinations. This guy just took it as a denial. Didn't leave me a phone number. I sent him a note back, but I haven't heard. Most people are completely unfamiliar with, with what all this filling means and wetlands determinations. The Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board is going to go to work on this. And I don't know if it's going to be in January or February, but keep an eye on the town newsletter because I'll let you know when that's going to start. It's important. Because most, when my neighbors, when I see, every time I see a dump truck pull up, I go have a word with them to say, hey, have you talked to Town Hall? Otherwise you're going to get a visit from somebody from code enforcement. You've got to have a permit. So as we work through this, as I said before, with the, with the keep us rural stuff, we want resident input on this. You know, right now we have a three-tiered structure on our fill permits. It really is a pretty simple system, but it doesn't seem to work. So again, we want everybody's input on how we can improve this. And also, and this is why I was asking Andy about getting the word out. I don't, I don't know how many people read the town newsletter on a monthly basis because there's always articles about this kind of stuff. I don't know how many people look at our ordinances before they get to, I, I never did before I, you know, was involved with the town. If I wanted to go fill, I'd keep filling until a guy pulled up in a truck with a light that said, I couldn't fill anymore. So we need to get the information out better because I feel sorry for these people that are, you know, getting cited, that are getting, neighbors are calling. There's, it's a lot of challenges to this whole thing. And I get it. The guy who wanted that wetlands determination, the reason he wanted to bring up his backyard is because everybody around him has filled their property. So he becomes the warded storage container for all of these properties that have built up around him. Now, you know what? That's part of living out here. You've, you've got to do a certain amount of maintenance to your property. But at the end of the day, most folks don't even know that there's a law out there that says you have to have a permit. So we'll talk more and more and more about that over the next probably four months or so. So that's the fill issue. Just a quick advertisement. The Rural Arts Advisory Board put the calendar together. It's a phenomenal calendar, I think. Is this a record-breaking year, Susan, for the number of pictures we have? There's like 28 pictures just in the back and then there's the 12 or 14 that are throughout, what are they this year? Five bucks? So five, it's the cheapest Christmas present you can give another resident in town. And it's a great one. I buy them every year from my family and they never complain. It's not all they get, but anyway. So yeah, you can get these at the front, at the front desk. Anytime Town Hall is over, opening, excuse me, open. On the fireworks, as, as I briefly mentioned earlier, folks, we've been working on this for three years. I mean, we've been hearing from residents over the years of horses that have killed themselves in barns. We had that happen two years ago. Three years ago, a guy who lives right across the street from Ugas lost a horse because somebody was firing off those cannon, what are they called? Mortars? Whatever his barn, his horse died. So we, we've been hearing about this for a couple of years now. We thought we had the answer. When Wellington got their exception, we thought, we're perfect. We're just like Wellington. Well, that's how politics works sometimes. They wouldn't give us the same exception they'd given others. We've been working with our lobbyists. We have a lobbyist in Tallahassee who maneuvers these things and helps us get them passed. Keith mentioned that the leadership is already telling him, this is the way it needs to get done. One of his suggestions was, because they don't want this exploding all over the state, we need to basically craft an ordinance that only fits for Southwest Ranches. So the criteria I think Keith put in it is it has to be no larger than, what is it? Seven square miles, Keith? And no more, the town can have no more people than, what is it? 8,000 people, Keith? So how many other towns in the state of Florida match our criteria? Very few. And that's the point behind this because they don't want everybody coming up for an exception. That's why we got turned down the first year. But I'm glad people showed up tonight. Like I said earlier, I learned a few things. It's, we're not Weston. I know people constantly are making comparisons to us with Weston and how much like, no, no. The only people who have horses in Weston that worry about fireworks are the ones that live in Windmill Ranches. I go to Weston every year to do fireworks, right over somebody's pond. I mean, nobody cares over there. They may have dogs that get upset and I wasn't even aware of this being an issue for veterans with PTSD. But, you know, again, always learning things up here. So we'll, we'll keep working on that. I mean, that's a very high priority for us. And happy holidays, folks. Thank you very much for a great year, living in our wonderful town.
Thank you, Bob.
I'll go. Thanks. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks. Thank you to everybody for coming out. Wish I could say I'm going to be brief. I'm not. First of all, Aster, thank you for coming out. I want to let you know that after I attended the memorial service, I received a card in the mail that had a cardinal in it. If you go out to my car right now, that cardinal is in Little Visor above my car for Birdie. So it's, it travels with me every day. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next, with the fireworks, yeah, my dogs freak out every year with the fireworks. And I'm on board with the new one this year. I'm going to have to find out what's going to happen when the fireworks come out for little Django, because he's a, he's a little pup Chihuahua. So I'll have to see how he's going to react. The other ones that had really freaked out, they've crossed the Rainbow Bridge. But yeah, we're going to find out what's going to happen. And I do support Gary's idea and, and a concept of an ordinance of 362 days a year. I like that. It's, I think it's a really, really good idea. I'd like to see what the language looks like. Maybe we can come up with something we can all agree with. I'm sure we can. Now, the, the development over here, Carlos's development, I agree that's something that I would support. Very much so. If it's presented in that, I don't know if that's exactly what the, if it's going to pan out that way. I was supposed to have a meeting and then just couldn't make the schedule times, scheduling right. Let's see. Now, on the idea with the advisory boards and having an exemption on December and July and just making that as a basic policy, I think that's good because a lot of people are away for vacation during July. And, you know, I know Sunshine Ranches has a very low turnout at the HOAs. So I think that would be a really good idea to have a hiatus in December and July, pass that on. Oh, my article that I'll be submitting for the next month's newsletter, going to go, I'm going to discuss the funding requests that we're making to Tallahassee. So that's going to be the general issue. I'm going to summarize some of the fundraising requests and hopefully we can get all of those approved by the legislature and pass the veto pen of the governor. I think all of these projects are very good for the town. And oh, and in addition, where Bob, you had mentioned Debbie Wasserman Schultz, you were asking for some law enforcement money. Debbie has in the past very much supported our town. She got us $660,000 for improvements for the park where we're holding the farmer's market area. So we're going to get some money for that to help out with that. Now, moving on to the Law and Order Report. This is something that I discussed, a couple of HOAs that I'm going to start going over this. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Going over the Law and Order Report. These are some of the law enforcement activities that have been going on in the town over like the last two weeks or so. On November 17th, in Green Meadows, we had a motor vehicle burglary. And loud parties. Had reports, November 19th, Country Estates, November 25th, Rolling Oaks, November 25th, Country Estates, November 26th, Griffin 345. And it was really odd as on December 4th, my phone rang at 12:50 in the morning with a neighbor complaining about a party on Mustang Trail, 12:50 in the morning. Yeah, that was really late. Other crimes reported fraud. November 25th, we had a fake check report. 11:25 in Sunshine Ranches, we had a credit card, fraudulent use of a credit card that was reported. Now, these fraud reports are required to make a record for law enforcement. Identity theft issues. I'm a nine-time victim of identity theft. So I kind of know the path to go. Country Estates, 11:28, there was a credit card account that was used that had been not used for quite a long time. So somebody had made a report on that fraud. Then in Green Meadows, on 11:30, somebody approached a home as a fake FPL employee. So you got to be very, very aware of what's going on in this. Moving on, some of the special attention issues that I found. On November 29th, and I'm going to go into a little bit detail on this a little later on. There were four suspects that were apprehended outside of Landmark Estates. And I'm going to go in a lot more detail on that soon. 11:27, there was a suspicious vehicle in Sunshine Ranches that was parked off the side of the road. It wasn't reported stolen. It wasn't from Sunshine Ranches. It was, wasn't even from Broward County. It was just there. On 11:30, there was a traffic stop in Green Meadows where the vehicle tag was apprehended because the person was driving with a suspended license. In Coquina Plaza, we had two shoplifting issues at two of the establishments over there. Overall, there were 66 calls with no report, four felony arrests, we'll be going into that, two traffic accidents and then four minor accidents that happened. Okay. Moving on. All right. Landmark incident. Yes. All right. Thanks. I'm just told that that's part of an investigation. So I'll be moving on from that. Okay.
Just for purposes of the record, there was an incident at Landmark. There were arrests made. It was a federal arrest and therefore it's a federal investigation. So it's not local. So we're not supposed to speak on federal investigations until they're completed.
Thank you. All right. All right. Well, that takes the wind out of my sails, everybody. Have a happy holiday and it, the mayor controls the who speaks, et cetera. So if you have a comment, you have to run through the mayor. But that wraps it up for me. Happy holidays to everybody and see you at the Chili Fest. I'll have chili.
Thank you, David. Jim, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I'll go next. I don't have but about four things, but I hope not to take any wind out of your sail. There's, there's not much more to talk about. Aster, love to see you. I mean, it's great. Love seeing you up in Tallahassee when we're up there for the, for the meeting. And just great to see you here. Look forward to seeing you Saturday out at the park. Want to say thank you to the 30 residents that showed up this evening. This is one of the largest crowds that I've had. And I've been here, this, I'm starting my third year now as your councilman. This is one of the largest crowds I've had. So thank you for coming. For those that weren't here for the presentation from the vet, it was a great presentation. And for those who stayed for the meeting, thank you for staying. Really appreciate that. Gary, I support your policy there for no meeting in July. If we could come up with something like that, that, you know, give them the option if they wanted to or not have it in July or December. I think that'd have it in, in July or December, I think that'd be a great, uh, you know, a great thing to do. The Rural Arts Board has an annual contest where the residents of the town decorate their houses, submit an application of, to get reviewed, and the board goes out, looks at those homes, and picks the three best homes. We had eight entries this year and we picked the three winners this past Tuesday night. And I will tell you that I do know for a fact that Santa Claus and Mrs. Santa Claus are coming down. They will be here Friday evening and they will be, uh, traveling with the fire truck to give out the awards for first, second, and third place. If you're interested, drive around town and look, there are some beautiful homes that are decorated around Southwest Ranches. Some are commercially done and a lot of them are done by the residents, and that's what we look for when we do it. So, if you're interested, if you'd like to join us, uh, get in touch with me or, or get in touch with Town Hall and, uh, we'll tell you where we'll be meeting Friday night. And just go around and look at the lights and enjoy yourself. But, like I said, Santa and Mrs. Santa will be there. I have heard that for a fact. Uh, the HOA meeting, I'm in District Three, Green Meadows, Ivanhoe, and Deans Ranches. We used to have a HOA years back, it folded up, started again, closed back up. I'm working real hard on getting that HOA meeting back together. We had a Zoom meeting this past, uh, Monday a week ago. I think we had 20 people involved, which was great. Uh, we don't have a place to meet yet, so we're still meeting by Zoom. And I think in January, we're gonna try to hold an election of officers and actually file some paperwork with the state of Florida, so that we will become a HOA civic association. I like to call it civic association. When you say HOA, people think that somebody's gonna make you paint your door purple, but that's not what we're here for. All right? And I know HOAs do that. They, they got a lot of power, but we're just more of a fun organization. Country Estates, Sunshine Ranches, and Rolling Oaks all have three great organizations, and I, I would say that probably within a year or two, we'll be joining them as, as that. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. All right. I've got a few items, actually. A lot of times, I don't have anything left, but you all were, you all were kind and left me a few, a few scraps here and there. I did want to, um, one of the things that I've talked about a number of times is, uh, 'cause, 'cause I hear from residents many times, is the, the Airbnbs that are in town. And, you know, a lot, sometimes it's, it's just residents that are, that live here and then they are leaving for a week and they'll do an Airbnb at their house. I, I got no problem with that. That's, that's fine. It's a residential use. It's a residential use and they're just, just doing that. Um, but there are other situations where an individual or a corporation is buying a residential home in our community and treating it as a small hotel. Either for, um, overnight stays or, or weekly stays, or many times, we were just hearing about the loud parties, many times it's as a party and they're just renting it out so they can run a big party and, um, you know, 'cause it doesn't affect them, they don't live here, but it affects us. And so, this is, this has been a topic that, um, I've been trying to get a little headway on and, um, just recently spoke to our lobbyist about it to see what we could do, because frankly, it is a commercial establishment that's being put into our residential neighborhoods. That should not be allowed. It's a business. How come that business can be put into our residential neighborhoods? Um, it shouldn't be allowed and it's not right. So, um, but there's a huge lobby in Tallahassee, much bigger than Southwest Ranches, that is pushing and promoting for that. I didn't realize, I don't know if you all knew it or not, but our normal lobbyist, the, the lobbyist firm that we, we have a retainer with, um, I found out this week that one of their clients is Airbnb. So, so that, that kind of eliminates them from helping us on this situation. So, I talked to Keith about it and, um, we have some options, um, to go another route there. But, uh, um, I, I wanted you all to be aware, I wanted the residents to be aware for sure, but I wanted you all to be aware that, uh, that that's something that, um, I think is important to our town and I'd like to obviously have the support of the council to pursue that further. I think that there is, um, what, what kinda brought this to light was, I was reading through the DRW newsletter, I know, I don't know, magazine, I don't know if you all, I'm sure you all get it, 'cause you're here. Um, there's some great articles in here. I mean, sometimes I...
What, Steve Breckus?
I, as I said, I like, that's not what I meant, but, yeah, I do write, I do write articles in there, council writes articles in there, but I was actually referring to like one that Mayor Paul, uh, over in Davie wrote, really, you know, I, I usually read through most of the articles in there, 'cause it's interesting to see what, what our, our friends and neighbors are doing next to us. And she wrote one on exactly this situation. Um, and so, so it's hurting them. As I talk to other mayors and officials, I'm finding out that, that this is not a Southwest Ranches problem. This is a universal problem to many communities that we're surrounded in. And so, so the goal is not to go up, to have Southwest Ranches go up there and fight this battle alone in Tallahassee, um, and spend a lot of money doing it. But, the goal is to try and find that coalition of like-minded municipalities that say, you know, enough is enough. And, um, you know, if you wanna put commercial businesses, put commercial businesses where they're zoned. Don't put them in our neighborhoods. And so, um, so we're gonna be pursuing that and, uh, and I'll, you know, uh, welcome your support on that and look forward to, um, you know, more updates on that. Another topic that we had talked about in the past briefly and, and been since doing a little work on it, is, uh, you know, we talk about, and I, I heard it tonight, you know, I heard it tonight. And, um, and I, and I get the comment. I promise you, I get the comment. I understand the comment. Does it frustrate me and make me a little upset? Yes, it does. But, I get it and I understand it. And the comment is, you know, that we're turning into Weston and, and we're becoming that way. And we're not, you know, we're, we're turning into Pines or whatever, you know, that we're losing our rural lifestyle. And, and, and I get where that, I get where that thought comes from, um, because the whole world around us is trying to change us. The reality is whether, you know, whether, whether we choose to recognize it or not, the truth is, the whole world is trying to rein in on us and make us conform to what's around us. So, it's a constant battle, um, that we all are certainly aware of up here and we're constantly working and, and trying to protect us. That's, that's why you elected us, was to protect you from those types of things, and that's what we work very hard to do. Most times, it's a defensive type move. Most times, we hear something, somebody's trying to do some commercial item or, or do something like that and it's defensive, we have to stop this, we have to stop that. But, an idea came up about a month or so ago to try and prom- something that which actually can promote our lifestyle as opposed to being defensive. And that is, um, for properties that, that don't have ag, but still have animals and still have a rural equestrian or, or even, even farm type, uh, situation, um, that it's more of a hobby situation. It's like, that's why we moved here, is because we enjoy it, we wanna do it, we wanna participate in it. To put a, um, a, a rebate in place for a structure, to recognize like a barn structure or things like that, you know, there, if you, if you have an ag, then that you get a tax, uh, deduction for that. But, if you're not ag and you build a barn, there's nothing that really the town can do for you to help promote and encourage you to do those type of rural activities. This would be something that could help you. Uh, it, it needs a little bit more work, um, but I wanted to introduce it to the council tonight, um, so that Andy can then distribute this out. Um, basically, what we're looking for is, is it would be an application type of situation that would be an annual, um, renewable item and would provide some sort of a rebate. I don't know, we would need to talk about what the amount is. I'm thinking, you know, maybe around $500, something like that. But, um, something to, that would encourage our residents to let you know that we support those types of activities and, and we wanna encourage them. So, um, you'll be hearing, Andy will be distributing some things and you'll hear some more about that, and I'm sure we'll be talking about it. Um, from a resident's standpoint, if you have any feedback or ideas, this is, this is an idea that's just getting started, so we definitely, I would welcome your ideas, your thoughts, your comments, anything that you feel like should be included or not included, uh, definitely would welcome to hear that feedback. I wanted to touch on, uh, folks, thank you for coming out. Always appreciate, um, you know, hearing directly from the residents when there's a situation out there, and I appreciate you all coming out. As, as one of our residents mentioned afterwards, we actually, um, we have a, a, our comp plan and an ordinance that would not allow us to put a gate in that location. But, with that said, I think there's some things that we can do there that, um, that might be beneficial. And I would, I would welcome to sit down, I don't know if you all have like any sort of a, 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 a meeting where you all get together, but if you do, I would love to come out and join you and, and maybe talk through some ideas. Certainly, safety, when it comes, you know, to the things that are important for a town to do, safety is number one. So, I totally get where you're coming from. Um, and, and, and please understand that what, what you experience, you're not unique. Um, what you experience is what your neighbors around you are experiencing as well. Um, there has been some situations with break-ins, um, especially car break-ins and, uh, things like that have been, been on the rise and, and we actually, um, and, and the mail, um, the stealing of the mail has been on the rise and actually, uh, Davie PD did an amazing job and they just were able to, uh, arrest some individuals that were doing that. So, so it's, it's, it's on the top of our list and, um, and so I'd like, I'd would love to talk to you about it, where we can maybe kick around some ideas. We're putting in, um, licensed reader cameras around town. Maybe we could put one, you know, uh, partner with you to, to install one in there, you know, maybe there's, I think there's some ideas that we could kick around and talk about and we can maybe get, get some, some progress and to help you out, so. The, the boards off the policy, December, July, awesome idea. I think that would help us too, kinda, you know, from a council standpoint. I know, um, this council, these guys, myself, are really committed to being at all of those board meetings and we do our best to be at everyone we possibly can. So, frankly, for our, our personal planning, it would be nice to know that we have a couple of months there that we could, uh, have, uh, know that we have some time. So, I think there's a lot of benefits to that. Uh, the fireworks ordinance, yeah, that's a great idea. I definitely support that. Uh, would love to see that come into place. I actually, you know, I have a list of, uh, four or five things that came up in the, um, in the conversation that, uh, you know, we'll see if we can do, we can do better. We always wanna do better, you know, we're not, we're not perfect. We're trying, uh, you know, what we can do, but it's always great to hear from the residents, 'cause we can always improve. And then the, uh, oh, yeah, the, the other thing I wanted to mention, talking about the fill, uh, great, great point, Bob, bringing up the fill. And we, we had, uh, a while back, six months ago or so, we had talked about having a couple of different packets. One was for Realtors and one was for new residents. And I know we have put together some, uh, some webpages on our, on our site for that kind of thing to be able to, um, which has some of that basic information that things should, that, that new residents should know. I don't know if fill is in there or not, but that's why I bring it up. We wanna make sure that's in there. And, um, and, and I think we need to do a much better job of promoting that. Andy, if we could, I just think that that, the word's not really out about that. I haven't heard anybody, uh, mention it to me. So, so I think we've got some resources out there, but we need to do, you know, focus a little bit more on, on promoting it. So, okay. Um, and with that, I certainly wish everybody very happy holidays, whatever you celebrate, just have an amazing time with your friends, your family, uh, be safe and, um, and, and enjoy the season. Thank you. All right. Legal comments?
Mayor, uh, for purposes of the record, the entire council, as of tonight, has completed its four hours of mandatory ethics, uh, pursuant to Broward County Code. Russell will be filing the requisite forms in the next, uh, couple of days. Uh, so I'm pleased that everyone's in compliance, 'cause that will be asked shortly. It's great seeing the Knight family here in, in Aster. Sorry, he walked out for a second. Uh, but, uh, just to put in perspective, Aster was first elected July 25th, 2000. That was when he was first elected to town council at the young age of 61, uh, and served with distinction for many, many years. I was thinking about that election when I saw him walk in. So, Mecca Fink won mayor. We then had four, uh, council members elected at large. There were no district seats back then. Elected at large. Who came in second to mayor Fink? Anyone?
Um, $100.
Nope. On the mayor slate. No, it was just the mayor's race. Remember, it was mayor and then vote for four. Okay? No, it was Stephen Leland and then Valletta came in third.
That's right.
So, just some Southwest Ranches history there.
Elvis.
That's right. So, he came in second in that election. So, uh, it's great to see Aster here. Look forward to stopping by the car show to catch up with them. And, uh, tr- thank you for, uh, having him come down and driving down to be with us tonight. Appreciate it. Other than that, Mayor, no more legal comments.
Great. Thank you, Keith. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Actually, I just have one thing tonight. Uh, this is a, a situation on a drainage project that we have going on out in Green Meadows now. You're all aware of this from having attended, uh, Drainage Advisory Board meetings. You've heard the discussion on it. I touched on all of it, uh, on this item with all of you individually this week, but in order to keep us, uh, in compliance, uh, Mr. Lopez has, has prepared something that, that he wanted me to just read into the record so that we officially advise you on the record. So, I'll say in completing the Southwest 54th Street Drainage Project from Dykes to Southwest 163rd, the vendor, Kaelis Corp., discovered large pockets of muck that have increased the fiscal year 2223 budgeted amount for this project by $24,986.62. Uh, because time was of the essence and the, the project was underway, we're requesting consent and approval from the council to utilize that $24,986.62 from unassigned fund ballots, our reserves, so that we can finish that project properly in a timely manner. So, I'm just asking for a consensus from the council to, to move that forward at this time.
Yeah. Absolutely.
You need a motion?
No, I think he's just looking for...
I just, as long as I get, we have consensus from the council. Russell, just let the record show that...
Anybody have an issue with that?
No issue with it.
No issue. Yep, we have consensus.
I just did have a quick, quick question.
Yes, sir.
So, the, the reason we need to spend the extra money is because they encountered muck that they didn't anticipate?
Far in excess of what might have been anticipated, yes.
What are we gonna do with that far in excess of muck? Can we put it in a park? Are they gonna reuse it on the project? I mean, they're not gonna haul it off and dump it somewhere, are they?
Well, it would be disposed of. I, I, it's something that, uh, I, I have to certainly check with Public Works.
Right.
If there's an opportunity to make use of that.
Wonderful.
And if, if we could make use of it and potentially lower that cost a little bit, then certainly we, we can look at doing that, if that opportunity exists.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Mayor, that's, that's really all I have tonight. Just wanna wish you all and, and the public, uh, staff, uh, happy, healthy holiday and, uh, we'll see you all again next week.
Yeah, and have a, have a good holiday yourself. I know you're heading, heading out, so enjoy.
I'm gonna try to actually get a vacation this time.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Good for you. Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Uh, folks, uh, sorry to kinda get back into my council member comments, but one of my notes slipped right off the page on me. So, if you take a trip down memory lane with FDOT five years ago... There was a project that was proposed to Southwest Ranches on the I-75 interchange. And essentially, if I recall the details properly, the project was to put a light, a new light, a net new light, at the intersection of I-75 and Griffin northbound. So, they would do the same thing as they've done on the southbound side. Uh, that's come back up with the MPO and they brought it to us knowing it was contentious five years ago. Now, Davie has changed their position on it. Davie is fine with it, but it's really, you know, it's whether we want to say no to it or not. They wanna recycle that work program money. Uh, I don't have an amount on it. It's probably close to half a million dollars, but they'd rather reuse that on another project, um, if we don't wanna use it. Now, it's been five years since it was brought up. I've been on the MPO for three years now and I, it's never come up, came up today. So, I don't know what we wanna do. Do we want it? Do we want, we have until July to make a decision on this, but I want to bring it up because if we don't want it, let's return the money. If we do want it.
You know, I speak for myself, you know, one more light is not, is not on my agenda. But, and I travel that fairly often, and frankly, I like it the way it is because I don't have to wait at a light. Generally, I can just, you know, wait for a break and go, you know? I think it's actually a better traffic situation.
Efficient.
Yeah, more efficient. But, you know, I'm just, one thought.
Let me do this then. Since everybody, you're hearing it all first time, let me ask Andy if he can put it on the agenda for next month, and then we can talk about it, and then we can make a decision in terms of whether we want to back out of it or move forward.
Okay.
Because I think we have to have a resolution one way or the other.
Okay.
Bob, one quick question. Why would the light be there to start with? What is the purpose of the light?
Stop traffic.
I mean.
Yeah, just to slow it down, I guess.
Just, right, everything works fine now, but who come up with the idea of putting a light there?
FDOT.
FDOT.
Like the light that's there today. They wanted to put a second one in because they thought it was such a great idea. And our concern at the time was, and I wasn't on the council, but I recall the conversations, our concern was immediately, car accidents started because people weren't using the new light. Like Jeff Kastner got seriously injured. Now that it's been five years and the accidents have tailed on, tailed off from all of these people not realizing there's a light there, they brought it back up. So do we need it? Let's talk about that next month. Andy, what I was asking, did you hear? Oh, that's, okay, you've heard on the, okay, perfect. So, thank you.
Great, thank you, Bob. All right, item number nine, ordinance.
This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the capital improvements element and adopting the five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years 2023 through 2027 pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on this item? Seeing none, public discussions closed. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mayor, item 10 was, the contractor didn't sign the contract, and the town has a rule that the contract has to be signed for you to consider it. So we're just pulling the item. It doesn't even need to be tabled because it will just be put back on anyway.
Okay, okay.
So if we can go to item 11.
Great. Item number 11?
Item number 11 is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, requesting that the mayor and the town clerk through this resolution authenticate the electorate's approval of three charter amendments, directing the town clerk to incorporate the approved charter amendments into the town charter and providing an effective date.
Great, thank you. These were the three charter amendments that you all voted on in the last election that you saw on the ballot, and all three passed by wide majorities, and so this is the actual adoption of those. Is there any comment?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Got a motion to approve? We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on the item? Seeing none, if we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next few items, several items, are the different boards, and so we will run through those one at a time. And if we can please go with item number 12.
Item number 12 is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Now, Mayor?
Yes.
Did you want me to read out loud the appointments that we have, the appointed boards, or is there going to be, do we want to, do we want to do that, or just go based on what we had appointed previously?
I don't think, I don't think we need to.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Certainly, if there's any question, if someone from the public, you know, wants them read and they come up and request it, we can definitely read it.
Mayor, I do have a comment on the Comprehensive Plan. There where it says Ms. Anna Coldus, it's a maybe. I did get confirmation from her personally that she would like to serve again.
Awesome.
All right? That just didn't get turned in in time. I'm sorry for that.
No, that's okay. Thank you for letting us know. All right, so we're set on that. Any other council comment on the comp board? Seeing none, is there any public comment on the comp board? Seeing none, if we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Item number 13.
Item number 13 is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board, restating the board's purpose and objectives, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any council comment on this item?
I got some comments I want to bring up on this issue. You know, Mr. Mayor, one of the big issues that are being assigned to this advisory board concerns creating a fill ordinance. And everybody's email received, a couple of applicants. And, you know, Bob, during his council member comments, mentioned that this fill ordinance is an important issue. A while back, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned that getting everybody's input that's interested in an issue is important. You know, during the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association, there was some recommendations from the president. And I'd like to make a motion on this, or amend my motion, that if, limited to this fill ordinance issue, that we can add two at-large members. And those would be the two members that submitted the applications, both Mary Ann Allen and Carlos Martinez. Carlos Martinez is a very well-versed developer, living in Sunshine Ranches, and Mary Ann Allen has a lot of knowledge that she has communicated on this. I've spoken with both of those individuals, and they both are interested in helping out and contributing to the drainage ordinance. So I'm going to make a motion that we extend the membership limited to working on this fill ordinance for those two individuals.
Before we do or do not get a second on that, I want to understand what you're proposing. Are you proposing that they join just for a limited amount of time during the fill?
Correct. Exactly, just the fill issue.
And how would that impact other topics that come up while they're on the board?
Their issues would be limited to the fill ordinance. Their input, their discussion, their votes, limited to the fill ordinance.
Couldn't they just do that as participants?
They could, but here they would have actual a vote.
But there's really no voting. We're looking for ideas.
I believe that there's a lot of issues that have been proposed, maybe changing the tier, the structure of the tiers, the penalties. Those issues that I feel that these two individuals should have some input on.
Any other council comment on that? Mary Ann, Carlos, I see you're out there, and I appreciate you being here. I heard, you know, and I appreciate you putting the applications in. I value, I know you both. I certainly value both of your opinions very much. And I very much want to hear, want you to participate in those meetings. I am very leery about changing how we add someone onto a board for a particular topic as opposed to, okay, voting on this but not voting on that. And I think that the input is the major thing. And Mary Ann, you've already done a great job of providing, providing a lot of great input. And so I think, you know, just like the council does, we show up at those meetings. I think being at those meetings and being able to provide the input that you have, the vote, the vote, I get, I get the vote's important. I don't want to minimize the vote. But the vote is always, at most, it's a recommendation to the council, and then it comes to the council for the final vote, for really whether it works or not. And so I think the main thing is truly providing the input, and I would love to see you both be there and provide that input. I'm not going to support this adding here, and I just wanted you to know why. Certainly, I respect you both very much. I think you both know that. And I very much want to hear your input onto it because you both know it really well. And just as we did with the fireworks and the animals, I learned a lot. I thought I knew it really well going in, but I learned this evening. So I look forward to that again. And I, you know, I truly hope that you don't take this, if this does not fly, I hope you don't take this as a, any sort of, you know, a negative thing. It's just, it's not really how we do the boards, and I sincerely want to hear your input, so, thank you. Is there a second on this item? I don't see one, so.
It's fine.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Yeah, thanks for bringing up that data. Appreciate it. All right, is there any further discussion on this item from?
I just wanted to make a suggestion more than the Drainage and Structure Advisory Board, and we still have Vince on here as an honorary member. Do you want to take him off? I mean, he's passed away. Russell?
The listing was for appointed as of last year, so if you see where it says interested, we obviously put an A.
Okay.
So he won't appear next year.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment? Mary Ann or Carlos, I don't know if you want, or Jason, whoever, if you'd like to make comment on this, yeah?
Jason Hallberg, 5751 Thoroughbred. You know, I was very new to the town when I joined the boards. Didn't really know a lot about the town. And I was gracious that I was tapped on the shoulder and asked to participate. I watched two years ago, the county council meeting, this day. You guys were up there, and each of you said that it's, you're grateful, and I'm kind of paraphrasing, it's not exact words, but the intent that I got behind it was that you're grateful that there's residents that want to step forward and help this town. The advisory boards are advising, they're not making rules. Why would we turn away people? The second thing is that Carlos, and I just walked over and asked them, I appreciate David that you're looking at it from a narrow perspective, but both of them are sitting out there, they submitted their applications the entire year. They did not look for a narrow window. So I think that's just one option you should explore in a different way. But I think it's important to hear from them, and, you know, if residents want to volunteer and help out and they have value, consider it. That's all I, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Carlos Martinez, Mustang Trail. Yeah, I was asked by a few people to look into it and if I would consider being on the board. I bring experience in the industry for 30 years. I've owned my own business and have a lot of experience in drainage. We have a big problem here with water on all our properties, especially during the rainy season, and we have issues with ponding waters on the swales that are no longer swales, and they're in our driveways. So when they asked me if I would sign up, I said, you know, maybe I can give some positive feedback towards this. I'm going to be working on my project here for quite a while, hopefully, and I plan on living here for a very long time. So when they asked me, I said, hey, I have no problem volunteering. I moved here, and I've been trying to be a good neighbor since I moved here, and if this helps and the board needs the help, I'm here for it. I checked off every day I'm available, anytime, day, night, afternoons. I'm self-employed, so if you guys need me here for a meeting at 10 o'clock in the afternoon, I'll be here. So just take that into consideration. If I'm needed, I'm good. If you guys just need me to show up to meetings every once in a while to give some input, I'm also good. But I was asked to look into maybe helping out, so I said, sure, anything that I can do to help out, you know, obviously, I'm here for that.
Great. Thank you, Carlos.
Good evening. George Morris, Chair of the Drainage Board. We welcome any public input at all times, and we're always craving the public to come in and give their opinion. Mary Ann has come in many different times, and we've had discussions. I've actually met with her and seen some of these properties that have been problems, and had a very positive discussion the other day. And took her to a site and looked at everything, and she did have some very good suggestions. I'm more than happy to listen to her and implement them. You know, I do want to discuss some of the things that she brought up. I think they're very good ideas. With respect to seven people, five people on the board, I don't have an opinion to that, but we definitely welcome the public to come out and give their opinions, and we're always looking for public input, always. Our doors always open, and I'm always available as well.
Mary Ann Allen, y'all know me. I was asked to serve on the Drainage Board because I do have a unique background in my equestrian lifestyle, 30 years, and also I was in construction for 23 years, although I don't look like it, but I was, okay? So I have a little more unique background than most women when it comes to construction. And I believe my insight would be very important to the board in that a lot of times you, engineers can draw plans, but sometimes they don't work out in the real world. And having a little bit of feedback from perhaps an equestrian point of view can help mold the decisions that are coming out before mistakes are made. And I know the council's very careful, but I was asked to serve, and I would like to serve, on that board, and I think voting is very important. I don't want to feel like I'm an impotent contributor that has no say-so on the board. And I think after 30 years of selfless devotion to this town, even with its inception, I think I could have a responsible position on the board, and I wouldn't abuse it, I don't want to create controversy, but I want to work for the benefit of the community. And I think it would be nice to have a woman on the board with my particular insight, and as an equestrian, representing the community as well. I think it would be a unique opportunity to get a different viewpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Yeah, Carlos, go ahead.
When everyone takes this into consideration, I agree that she's very qualified, and as a resident of 30 years, I don't want a decision to be made against her because I feel that I would, you know, feel, so I would be glad to see her on there also.
Right.
Let you guys go.
Thank you, Carlos. Great. Any other public comment on the item? All right, seeing none. Yeah, David?
Since the issue for a temporary person was not seconded, what are the council's thoughts about adding these two as full-time members?
Are you making a motion?
I'm not making a motion. I'm seeking input.
You know, I'll be, I'll be, you know, 100% transparent here. I think that both of those individuals would be great additions to the board. I was very uncomfortable with how you had proposed it. I just don't think it would work. But the other thing, you know, just 100% transparent, not, you know, is that for a long time, this board was five individuals. Now it's seven. This would take it to nine. It's getting to be a really large board, and this is a more of a technical topic and conversation than a lot of the other ones. So I was actually a proponent, I was very hesitant to go from five to seven.
Okay.
Going from seven to nine.
Even less.
Even less.
All right.
And that's probably, I would love to have them on the board, to be honest with you, but how big does the board get, you know, in the discussions to coming up with policy? Sorry, Gary, I'm always having my back to you, but.
I can hear you.
But, you know, that's, that's kind of, to be honest with you, that's kind of my sticking point. How big does the board get? So I, you know, but I'm, I would love to hear what other people think. These are two great individuals, you know? Just a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I have a question. If we have seven on the board, what is a quorum to have the meeting?
Four.
All right? If you have nine?
Five.
So there could be times when they couldn't have meetings, because when you start to have five or six people to form a quorum, does that present a problem sometimes?
The bigger the group, the harder it is.
Right, right.
David, I don't think you, I don't think the support is there.
All right.
But.
I get it. It's fine.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. But...
Sure, I'm sure my neighbors will understand. They've seen this, so.
Okay. All right, I think, I think we're good. Russell, if you can please call the roll.
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kazinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Item number 14.
This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of Fire Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on this item? Seeing none. Russell, if you can please call the roll.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kazinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number 15.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida extending the term of the Parks and Recreation, Forestry, and Natural Resources Advisory Board, ratifying the board's purpose and objectives, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yeah, just one question. I don't know the person, but, I mean, we've got a person here. Has anybody validated they really want to be here because they've missed all but four meetings?
Cheryl Melson?
Yeah.
What is, what is the question of her?
Well, I mean, they're, the person's not here most of the time.
Don't we have a policy where you've missed three?
That's what I'm kind of questioning.
Right. Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, and we have, we have another resident that actually put in an application for this board, so maybe we, we do a swap.
Substitute?
Yeah.
Well, you've got...
Caesar Sedano?
Right.
You got eight on there now.
Caesar here?
I don't know if Caesar's here. I've never, I don't, I don't know Caesar. I don't think Caesar's here.
No.
Think he should have been here.
You just want to remove?
That'll take us down to an odd number.
But we can always add somebody.
Can always add some.
We can always add somebody at any time. Doesn't have to be today.
I would, you know, I would say, I don't, I don't know Caesar, but one thing about the Parks, well, I'm fine. I'm fine.
Yeah.
I mean, the Parks Board has been huge, but then we've had real problems getting a quorum, too.
Yeah.
They've been up to 10, and they...
That's why I'm saying.
They didn't meet for like six or eight months.
Drop, drop down.
Yeah.
Drop down to seven.
All right, so, yeah, let's just... So, then we need to, if we're going to do that, we need to adjust the, make a...
Modify the motion.
Yeah.
Modify the motion to go back down to seven.
Yeah. To remove Cheryl. Is there a second on that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on the item? Seeing none. Russell, if you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kazinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number 16.
This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Rural Public Arts and Design Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing an effective date.
Motion?
Second.
Do we want to consider Robert Sirota, who was on that board before?
Yeah, Robert's been on that board, I think.
It's, it pops it to an even number, but on the same token, he's the idea guy.
He is. I'm not, you know, I've never had a problem with even numbers on the boards, to be honest with you.
Steve Robert had been on the board for several years, but he got busy with his work. It got real busy.
Yeah, he had to step away.
He's since, right, he's since sold that business, and he has time now. He said he'd very much like to get back.
You want to modify your motion?
Yes. I'd like to, motion that we accept the board along with Robert Sirota as a at-large member.
And I'll second that version.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the item? Now, is there any public discussion on the item? Seeing none. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kazinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And item number 17.
This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Schools and Education Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve. Second.
And so this is, we have one member that was previously on there, Leah McDonald, who has decided not to continue on, right? So, we're looking at a total of seven. Is that correct?
That's what I'm talking about, Leah McDonald.
That's what it says. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they need to modify their motion.
Well, that's why I wanted to make sure what the motion was, whether it was for the eight or the seven.
Motion eight.
I saw it.
I had nothing to do with it, so.
Yeah. Russell, what is?
Selena?
Oh, Selena. That's right.
Wow. Yeah, I take it. Oh, wow. Yeah, right.
We left her off the list.
Wow.
We'd have eight.
We'd have eight, actually.
We'd have eight with...
With the rumble of Leah McDonald.
Okay. So, is that, is that the motion that is on the table, or do we need to adjust the motion?
The motion to approve was, I guess, I don't know if everybody had the backup that had the correct information, so probably not.
Okay, so let's...
My idea, my idea was that, I didn't even see Selena on here, so...
Right, yeah.
So, let's, let's...
So, I'd like to modify my motion to, as it says, Ms. McDonald's not interested, but add Selena Hodges as well.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the item? Is there any public discussion on the item? Seeing none. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kazinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Item number 18 is the annual review of our charter officials, and as we traditionally do, you want to speak to this, Andy, or?
If I may, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
This is the annual charter review for Emile, as financial administrator, Russell in his role as town clerk, and for myself as town administrator. We are contractually obligated to place this onto the agenda in December, which we have done. We're going to ask you, as has been customary, to delay this discussion until January to allow you more time to solicit input and evaluate it as you see fit, as opposed to an agenda coming out a week ago and something potentially that critical, putting you in a position to discuss on short notice. So, we try to allow the council more time to ponder something so important.
Great.
Thank you.
Great. All right. So, for that, do we need a motion to move that, or we just, we're good? Yeah.
It's a discussion item.
All right. So, we're good there. Item number 19, approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Great. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? From the public? Seeing none. If we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kazinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion to approve? No, motion adjourned.
All right. Thank you all. We are adjourned.